Okay, we are live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. Councilmember Farrelotto?
Here.
Councilmember Gollamback?
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Present.
Council President Pridgen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman? Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Quarm is present. Council President Pridgen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Quarm is present. Are we starting from the top? Items for discussion, item number one, lodging house license 115, AKA 117 Glenwood.
Item solved.
Is the chair on?
Yes, we have a motion to open by council member Rivera, seconded by council member Bowman.
Mr. Chair. If I may, this is the lodging house in the Elegant District from 20, this was filed in, as we can see, in 2018. There was some, I think, confusion, definitely on our part, of whether this was going forward. And then we know that there were some changes to the green code. We have asked the applicants if, and we can go back to full screen, please, with the council members. We have asked the applicants to come on. We've also asked the applicants to meet with the community. And for the record, there was a lit drop that was done, not only in the Elegant District, but in the adjoining Maston District. So we have, in every way that we could, have notified the public of this meeting. We have also allowed for people to be with us by Facebook. We have also allowed people to write in and to call, all of which, any comment will be put on the record, if not today, but also later. So, Mr. Chair, with your permission, if we could hear from the applicant with a little history of what has happened from 2018 to now, and why they are asking for this to go forward at this time, with your permission, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that would be great. We invite and welcome the applicant to give their presentation right now.
Who's representing the applicant, if they could start?
If that's you, Mike Rizman, I think you're on mute.
You know?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm a rookie at Zoom, so, thanks. I'm an attorney at Hudson-Russ, and I represent Community Resources for Justice. Online with me today is John Larabee, who's the president and CEO of CRJ, and Ellen Donna Rama, who's the Vice President of Justice Services. I just want to be brief, think of a brief overview of where we are and why we're before the council today, if I may. Community Resources for Justice operates resident reentry centers throughout the country, eight centers in four different states. They've been in business for approximately 142 years, and their representatives speak more in detail about that. They house nonviolent federal inmates released from federal prisons. They've done this successfully for over 100 years. They have a contract with the Federal Bureau of Prisons to operate a center at 115 Glenwood. Beginning, there's been some extensions. They've been working on this for about two years. As you see in the council item that's originally filed, I think it had a 2018 number. This matter has become of some concern, which is why we're here today, because of the pandemic and the increasing pressure to release people from our crescent institutions around the country. And we're getting a lot of encouragement from the federal government to try to move our process along as soon as possible. And as River Pridgen, as you've seen, we've sent some letters from representatives locally and nationally of the Federal Bureau of Prisons to document that. So from the beginning, we've made sure, our goal has been to follow the city procedures verbatim. This process, we obtained a building permit in October of 2019, specifically assigned by Dave Krug on October 8th, 2019. We've put in about $1 million into the project so far. We're using RPO Kill as our general contractor. We're reducing the occupancy from the former occupancy of about 52 to about 41, and we're on the eve of a certificate of occupancy. We've been working closely with the building inspectors. We're down, respecting within the next two weeks to have a certificate of occupancy from the Department of Inspections, permits and economic development. As far as we know from our contractor, we don't have any code issues remaining. We're optimistic from our contacts last week that we're going to get a certificate of occupancy, any, within the next week. So we're at the last step. We're under Chapter 269 of the City Code entitled Lodging Houses. The Department of Permits and Inspections has referred this to the Common Council to obtain a lodging house license. This is a process, as you know, members of the council, to, for you to oversee, to license and oversee a lodging house. It's renewable annually. It subjects your approval, and if there's any problem, it can be revoked. And if there's, and it has to renew it each year, so there's an automatic process for your oversight to see if there's any problems that develop. We understand that there may have been problems with the prior operator. We understand that. We're ready to deal with that, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But, you know, our goal is to not have any problems and to cooperate with this common council and to participate and have you have oversight of this project annually to make sure that there, if any problems in the future develop, we'll address it. And work with you to make sure that they get solved. There's four specific requirements in Chapter 269 for lodging house licenses. You need support from the police department. Now, we've provided the common council with a letter from Steve Nichols from the department. Only has the police department signed off and approved the license. They're actually supporting it, I believe. And I'm going to speak for the commissioner or deputy commissioner, but they are actually, and we provided, I don't know, to council staff, letters from the Buffalo Police Department supporting our project and recognizing the need for it. I believe that any fire department issue has been resolved. I think any, your kind of health department issue will be resolved. And the inspections and permits, so we're working with the building inspectors. We're expecting a final inspection next week. So we feel that we've met all the requirements of Chapter 269. So that's where we're at. We're at the 11th hour. We've spent $1 million. We have a building permit. We have all the four requirements of the Chapter 269, I believe, have been met. Other than, and if the only thing we need is a certificate of occupancy, and we're confident we're going to get that from the building inspector within a week. So, and, you know, our contract, we have a contract with the federal government. We were hoping to open the project earlier. They would like us to begin May 1st, and we appreciate the common council schedule. I know some of the committee meetings you've been canceling under these unusual times. And we appreciate your convening this meeting and actually considering, you know, our application. So from our view is, you know, if you look at the standards in Chapter 269, I think we've met all those requirements. Assuming that we get a certificate of occupancy next week, we would request that the common council approve our items so we can address this really important matter, both locally and nationally, and do it in a manner I think that the common council will be pleased with. So then I thought, after me, I thought the chief executive officer of CRJ could give a little more background about what they're actually wanting to do there and, you know, what the background of their organization, if I may. John?
Yes. Hi, John Larabee here. Thanks, Mike. Council President Pridgen, committee chair Ferrelieto, council members, committee members, thank you very much, as Mike said, for convening the meeting and hearing our application. Ellen Donnarumma, as Mike mentioned, is with me today. Ellen is our Vice President of Justice Services overseeing all of our reentry programs. Community Resources for Justice is a 142-year-old not-for-profit. We have three lines of professional practice. Our Community Strategies Division works with people with intellectual disabilities. We have about 40 group homes and another 40 individuals in shared living, like a foster care placement. We provide 24/7 supports and assistance for that population. We have a Crime and Justice Institute, which is a public policy consulting unit that works with state and local governments across the country on justice reform and justice improvements. And then we have our Social Justice Services Division, which Ellen oversees. Our first halfway house or reentry center opened in 1896. Today, we operate seven centers throughout the Northeast, in Albany, Boston, Manchester, New Hampshire, Pawtucket, Rhode Island, Springfield, Massachusetts. And our Boston Center is the oldest continuously operating center for the Federal Bureau of Prisons. The reentry program on Glenwood Avenue, the Lighthouse Reentry Center, will assist those inmates returning to the Buffalo community from federal prison. These are people that are about to be released within months, and the reentry services, which is done with the Bureau of Prisons across the country, is providing that support and assistance and guidance so that individuals' return is successful. To augment our application, I'd like to share with you a few efforts that we make to ensure that all of our programs and services are operated professionally, safely, and with close oversight. We take great pride in the professional quality of our services. Our programs are designed and operated using evidence-based principles and practices. Our staff are trained, using curriculum for reentry programs designed by the University of Cincinnati, based on that research and evidence, and trained by the university. Our intensive case management model includes a client assessment to identify the social service needs of the individual, a program plan based on the ad assessment, along with the input of the client, and then regular monitoring of progress with that plan. In addition to addressing the social service needs, we assist clients to secure employment while they're with us and for when they leave, find safe and stable housing, and engage with appropriate clinical services for substance abuse and mental illness. Our staff and the organization are active members in relevant trade associations. In fact, Ellen is the immediate past president of International Community Corrections Association, which consists of providers of these services around the world. In terms of our safe operations, we take pride in operating our facilities and our programs that are respectful of the neighborhood and the larger community. First of all, clients are closely supervised and held accountable for misbehavior. The facility is staffed 24 hours a day with at least two trained staff. We've hired and trained 14 individuals from the Buffalo community to begin working on the commencement of the center. Every client leaving the facility is guided by an itinerary, which we, our staff review and approve, and maps out where the individual's going, how they're going to get there, who they'll be with, and when they will return. And then we regularly monitor adherence with that itinerary. Every client coming back to the facility is searched and given a breathalyzer at every time they come back, and any bags being carried are searched. Every client is randomly drug tested over the course of a month. I think everyone is tested two or three times. If there's reason to do more, we do that. And there are cameras monitored by the staff covering all common areas inside the building, as well as the exterior of the building. We also take great pride in the appearance of our properties, and we work hard to win the approval of neighbors. As Mike mentioned, we've spent over $1 million to improve the facility on Glenwood Avenue. Each year, the organization has about $1.5 million in capital improvements on existing buildings, not counting the new ones. And then we spend about $600,000 in maintenance and repairs throughout the course of the year. One test of ours was our Manchester and Hampshire program. And the alderman was telling us that he sits at his kitchen table, looks out the window, and sees our program, and he uses it as a model for how property owners in his neighborhood need to maintain their property. We also have extensive oversight. We have a management structure and expertise providing oversight of all of our locations. In the case of the Lighthouse Reentry Center, there'll be an onsite program director and assistant director, again, both from the Buffalo community. They'll be supervised by our Director of Reentry Operations, whose expertise is respected by the Bureau of Prisons and who has a distinguished law enforcement career prior to joining CRJ. We have a Quality Assurance Unit, which regularly audits program functions and provides reports to management. And finally, support and oversight is also provided by senior staff in our Finance Department, Human Resources, Facilities Management, and Information Technology. In addition to what we do, each of our programs has a community advisory board made up of local officials, social service partners, and neighbors. We've begun to form an advisory board for the Lighthouse Center, with some neighbors agreeing to join, awaiting the start. In the course of putting this project together, as Mike mentioned, we've met several times with the Buffalo Police Department, including Commissioner Lockwood and Captain Nichols. We wanted to familiarize them with CRJ and the program and also get their input. And we've had several conversations with them. Our Bureau of Prison Centers, again, which Lighthouse Reentry will be one of them, is audited by the Bureau of Prisons itself at least three times a year, once with advance notice, and then twice they just show up with no notice. Our reentry centers are credited by the American Correctional Association, and our last three centers to receive accreditation each achieve 100% compliance. Finally, in terms of oversight, we were able to host a community meeting, a neighborhood meeting, on March 16th. We had done a literature drop, and I believe Council President Pridgen's office may have also shared the invitation, attended by several members, especially our immediate abutters. So as Mike mentioned, we're asking for your approval of the license now so that we can begin our operations as soon as the building renovations are completed. As you probably know, many state, local, and federal government agencies are working to reduce prison populations in the face of the pandemic. It's been reported that four of the top 10 COVID hotspots are prisons. The Buffalo community has been out without a reentry center since November of 2017. People coming back from federal prison to Buffalo go through a program in Rochester, where, as you can imagine, while they may be able to get a job while they're in Rochester, it's not a job that they hold when they come back to Buffalo. They're not able to establish the local relationships that are needed for the reentry. And the Lighthouse Reentry Center would ensure that those individuals leaving federal prison will have the structure, support, and supervision so necessary to safely return home to Buffalo. I welcome any of your questions, and I'm sure Ellen and I can answer them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Council President, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, and thank you again for everybody being on. I want to be clear that I am in support of reentry programs. I think it is very important in what CRJ does. But there are just some procedural questions I want to clear up, because at the end of the day, whatever the council decides to do moving forward, the neighbors and the people in the community will be affected. So number one, I do want to say to people who are on live on Facebook, is if they have comments that are relevant to this discussion, that they can type them in live time now. And there is a staff member who, when we're finished, while we're still live, will read those comments that are relevant to this discussion. So I wanted, while we have Corporation Council, because I know during these discussions, and this came to me in 2018, there hadn't been a lot of conversation, or really, everything was very quiet as far as on the council's end. And so there were permits that were issued for building without there being a lodging house license. Is that in the order of how this should have went? Because we've had in the past, and this is not comparing apples to apples, but processes to processes, where we have had, for instance, stores who started renovations without the council's approval, and then came back to us and said, "We've put in a lot of money", and it then put the pressure then on the council to say yes based on money and not process. Is this the normal way? Because if so, we got a problem.
Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. I do not believe that's how it's usually done. However, I believe OSB would be the best entity to really speak to that. Usually, when we have a new business or a business who, you know, looking to do renovation for a specific use, they would normally go through OSB, first of all, to ensure that the use is applicable for the area and that it's possible. And usually, once it is, then they would try to get a permit that would be needed for the renovation or the building for that matter. So they may even have to go through the planning board. And I'm sure that Mr. Rizman or, you know, a member from CRJ might be able to speak better to that. But usually, I would say the logical process would be to ensure first that your use, your intended use, is possible and allowed in the area. And then, secondly, trying to obtain the permit so that you can do the building, if it's building or the renovation. Thanks.
So if I could ask Council for CRJ, was that your understanding? I mean, I know you've worked here before, that there should be millions of dollars put into something before the council has approved?
Well, I think it has to do with, it's a good question, the way I would look at it. When you apply for a building permit, you go down to the third floor and you meet with, and I had, the staff that is there now is different than I was there. When I was there, it was, you basically just checked with Dave Krug, and that was it, right? Now, you have six experienced people knowledgeable in the city code and the green code. You go to them, they give you a building permit. They tell you, if you have any problems, they would send you to the zoning board or planning board. And this lodging house license is not really like a special use permit. It's more of a license to regulate, you know, either like a roomy house or, you know, in this case, a lodging house. It's more of a way for you to regulate the operation, like have oversight on an annual basis, you know, in case you have a problem. Let's say you had a roomy house, you had troublesome tenants. It's not really, I don't really view it as the first step. I review it, you know, the first step is getting a building permit, making sure that permits inspections is okay with what you're going to do. And then, you know, you send your contractor, your architect there. And this is, to me, the last step. This is more of a licensing regulation, more than a zoning or code issue. And it's just makes it sure that the police department's okay with it, the fire department, that it meets code. So, you know, I don't think this is the wrong process. I think it's the right process. And this is, I think, mostly supposed to be, I don't want to say ministerial, but, you know, it's a procedure so that you have oversight over lodging house. Not, it's not you're saying this is, you know, from the beginning that this, you know, this wouldn't be the first place you would go. The first place you would go would be to get a building permit. So I think the procedure has been in the right order and correct, if I may. With all due respect, I don't mean to question the Corporation Council. I'm just giving you my sort of general sense of, you know, looking at Chapter 269 and what it's for. And I would also add, you know, so you look at this, you know, what was Chapter 26?
I want to comment on that before we go down any other roads and we get lost in that. I respectfully disagree with you, because if this was not important, that it came to the council in the beginning of the stages, we would not be here right now, having an emergency, basically, meeting on behalf of the council and your client. At the end of the day, every other business in the city of Buffalo, every other business, as Corporation Counsel has stated, would come to the council for that permission beforehand. And I'm not sure what happened and who used to be here and how it used to be done, but I want to be clear, that's not how it's done since I've been sitting in this chair. And especially with something as important as a halfway house that is not going on Main Street, that is not going downtown. It is going into a neighborhood. So to hear that this is, you know, the last step, it concerns me. It concerns me with the thought of this common council is basically the last step in the process after your client now has spent $1 million on a halfway house. That, my first concern, and I'm always concerned about the neighbors. I'm going to be very honest with you. I got a whole packet here of letters. Not one of these letters is from people who live there. They're from people in the government. They're from people who are granting stuff. Nothing from the neighbors, and I got that. I'm the council member. I'll handle that part and have handled that part. But what was submitted does not make a difference to me. I want to be very clear. All of these people can say yes and say it's the best thing since sliced bread, but these are not the people that I have been elected to represent. That's number one. That's number two. But the concern is going forward, and that thought that, you know, we got the building permit. We got all of these other people, but at the end of the day, this is not the 11th hour for the council, because I've been at work every day. And the last meeting that I had has been almost two years ago without a peep of moving forward with the lodging house. So I want to be clear, especially for those who may be watching, because at the end of the day, this is what happens, and everybody knows it. When it hits the paper, when it hits the news, it's the common council allowed it, as if we've been in the process all of this time, and we have not. So I just want to be very clear that the common council, to me, and hearing from our attorney, is not the last stop. Common council should have been involved in 1819, before the first brick or the first piece of drywall was put up. It should have been a common council discussion to make sure that this would go through. Corporation Council for the city of Buffalo, with that thought of the common council's role, is, you know, kind of at the end. So if the common council right now decides, and we know that the client, that the applicant can go to court and all that, and that's fine, but if the common council decided that based on the neighbors and the neighborhood and complaints, would this be able to go forward without going to court? And this is a question for Corporation Council for the city.
Again, Assistant Corporation comes to Karen Gordon. I think we have a situation here that may have been, I guess, started several years ago, maybe two years ago. And I'm referring to the letter that was issued by OSB, which in 20, I wanted to say in November, around November 7th of 2018, said to CRJ that they were in compliance, and they basically had the authority to go ahead and do whatever they needed to do. And I believe it may have been from that perspective that CRJ concluded that they did not need to come to the common council, because they were there, whatever they wanted to do was allowed and permitted, because they received a letter from OSB saying that it was. So I just want to, you know, put that out there, because that's also part of the fact pattern. It's very important that we understand that. So at this point, I would say, if we were to deny it, of course, as you understand, it could be repercussions of, you know, a number of things that CRJ, that can come out of the situation. But I think CRJ at this point is working or based on reliance that, you know, OSB may have created from a letter that was given to them. And so it might be something that we want to think about a little bit more before we actually make a final determination. But of course, the common council always have the ultimate decision in any license that it has to give, because the license is issued by the city.
And for the record, Corporation Council, I have, for the record and for the public, a letter dated October 10th, 2018 to Hodgson and Russ. Um, and it does, uh, deal with 115 Glenwood. And I'm going to read it into the record to whom it may concern. After researching the above referenced property, I find it to be located in the into our residential zone, according to the zoning map of the city of Buffalo. Its current use as a residential reentry center halfway house is considered legal, non-conforming permitted by the rules and procedures of the Unified Development Code, better known as the Green Code. There, and that's not a, a part of the quote, uh, back to the letter. There are no zoning violations on this property. If you require further information and it is signed by, uh, Chris Harley, a senior planner. But in this letter, I see nothing that says that the common council's approval. So I want to be clear, his letter is about zoning. And his letter, yeah, totally, and has nothing at all to do with the lodging house license, correct?
Um, so there's, my answer to this is twofold. So if, um, and I'm assuming from that letter in, uh, OSP's opinion, at a point when this application or this request came before them, the lodging house was consistent with the zoning requirement. And, um, and there could be a lot of reasons why they would have assumed that. For instance, uh, the building prior use was lodge, a lodging house. Um, and so probably at a time when they came before, um, OSP, it was a continued use. We don't know from my understanding and my research at, in 2015, the use of the building as a lodging house had terminated. And so in 2018, when they would have requested, um, a, a, a determination, uh, at that time, the building use would have been, um, it would not have been in use for at least 12 months. With the advent of the Green Code in 26, 2016, 2017, we have a situation where new rules and regulations were implemented. And so we, um, in order for us to determine what use could be placed in a particular area, we had to look at what we call the, the use table on the section 6A. Um, on the section 6A, if a use was allowed, then you go ahead, you make your application. If you need to do a building or a renovation, you go through the planning board. If a use was not allowed without a permit, that's where the common council comes in. And that application has to be made to the common council for the authority to use that, um, the, the, the building in that particular way. Yes, the letter that you read did not make mention of the common council. And I believe that at a time when that letter was given, it was under the presumption that the use was a continued use. And so there was no, there was no break in service. And so there was no need to go to the common council for that use permit that would have been needed. Um, on, since then, as I said, I've been looking into it and it appears that in 2015, the use, um, had been discontinued. And under our current code, if a use has been discontinued for 12 months, if you have to make a new application for it and you have to come to the common council for an approval. So that's where we should have been, um, um, had things gone the way, you know, in my opinion, it should have. Um, but given the circumstances, that wasn't done and so we're here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Chair, there's all the questions I had.
Any other questions?
Um, I'm wondering, is there anything off of our live feed, um, any comments that we should read into the record?
Council President, at this time, there's no comments.
Um, hearing that, Mr. Chair, I do have from, uh, my chief of staff, a list of neighbors who have been contacted. Um, one neighbor who lives right next door, um, CRJ, uh, did agree to put up a fence, I believe. And I believe that they did do that already. I'm not sure. I see Ellen, is that right, Ellen? Is that already up? So they have taken care of that. Um, there was another concern from a neighbor, um, and she is being included on a community board that CRJ, um, is creating and I fully support that. And I'm thankful, uh, that they are doing that. So I do want to, I want to be clear that my, 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 my kind of disdain was for process, but not necessarily for CRJ. Uh, because they have gone, they have had several meetings, uh, with the residents in that immediate area. Um, and also we did do a very quick, uh, kind of search of their other areas and other cities. And to be quite honestly, and I'm sure that there are some complaints out there. I don't know of any organization, I don't know of a church that doesn't have any complaints. Um, but I, what we weren't able to find any huge complaints, any lawsuits, anything like that. So I'll go right to John if I can and ask John, do you have any locations right now where, that you could share with us on the record, uh, that are having any problems? And I, if you could just state that for me on the record, like neighborhood issues?
No neighborhood issues. Obviously, right now, we're fully engaged in managing the COVID crisis in all of our centers. And, and I, and Ellen is a lot closer to it than I am, but I, I, I tell you that we're, it's, it's, we're, we're lucky and probably a little good at the same time. We're, we're doing well through this. But, uh, no, there have been no neighborhood problems. And again, we, we actively seek them out. We, um, I can remember going to visit the police chief in Albany. And, um, he, uh, when we arrived at his office for the meeting, he was asking us, what's wrong? What's going on? And we said, we're just doing our check-in. We just wanted to make sure that you, we're still behaving as you would expect us to behave in your neighborhood, in your community. Um, so we, we take an active effort to, to reach out to our neighborhood, the community advisory boards in each of our programs and regular contacts with public officials.
Yeah. How is that community advisory board made up? Who chooses the people on?
It, it varies by location. We, uh, but we try to include public officials. So we've had, um, staff of the local city council or common council for that district. Uh, police officers, typically the community policing officers are a part of it. Uh, social service providers that we, uh, partner with. Um, the, uh, sort of what I call institutional neighborhoods. The, the neighborhood council is a representative from the neighborhood council on it. Uh, and then, uh, neighbors as well, individual citizen neighbors.
So I, I would hope that we would do the same thing if this is approved, uh, Tuesday, uh, to ensure that we do have, uh, that happen in writing. And you do understand as Corporation Council has said, or I know as a matter of fact, as your, as, as your council just said, that this is renewable annually. So for the record, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it doesn't guarantee that if in a year we have extenuating situations that we need to look at, that this will automatically be renewed. You do understand that, right?
I do, I do. And, and, and as part of our, the oversight I mentioned, the Bureau of Prisons, they're able to pull up a contract if we're not performing as we should, including our standing in the community. And I think that's what happened to the prior provider. And again, we've got the longest operating one for over 50 years. Our others have been in operation for 15 to 20 years. I'm sorry, 10 to 15 years. And we've had no problems with the Bureau of Prisons, no problems with neighbors or neighborhoods, uh, no problems with our partners.
Okay. Um, if I, I'm, I'm done with any questions that I have. There might be others on, so I'll be quiet.
Any other questions? If we can just unmute that motion, Majority Leader.
Just wanted to ask a quick question of Council President and just mention the location of this project because there may be, be people on of his district may not know exactly where it is.
So it's, it's 115, 117, uh, Glenwood? And that information is out there. And, um, my recommendation, because I don't see the Maston District Council member on, um, and because some people are just being made aware of this by doing the watch party, uh, that we send it for recommend, send it without rec, but that we send it to Tuesday's meeting. That way, just in case we got some other information. I don't foresee, uh, um, you know, I'm most concerned, I'm not, I'm not concerned about somebody calling me from, from two miles away with concern as much as I am about the immediate neighborhood, which we have canvassed, which we've talked to, which has been met with. So I would just leave that, um, as a, a, um, without recommendation in case there's other information. Uh, but right now I, I feel comfortable, um, in sending it forward to the council.
Motion to send without recommendation?
Seconded by Council Member Scanlon.
Uh, there's a question that's coming up on mine, and I think thi- this is for federal parolees, correct?
Uh, excuse me, it's, it's, uh, there is no more parole in the federal system. So they are technically still inmate. They're within the last, um, four to six months of their sentence. We also do get some people on federal probation, um, who are having a hard time in the community. That's usually about five or 10%. And then as they leave us, all of them, both the inmates and probationers are supervised by federal probation. So throughout the process, throughout the stay, we work closely with federal probation officers in the Buffalo community to make that transition work.
And this was just a comment that was coming up on the live, uh, because they were asking about state parolees. Um, and that's a whole different system. So I just wanted to, uh, make sure, uh, that it was, uh, for federal. So to answer Leslie Bishop's question that was coming through. Thank you.
Next item.
Item number two, secondhand dealer, 2186 Fillmore.
Thank you.
The most, we have a motion to table items two through 27 by Majority Leader Rivera, seconded by Council Member Gullumbeck.
Can I just make a quick note to Staff, Mr. Chairman? That, um, that beginning, uh, Flea Market is not in the Fillmore District, it's in the Maston District. If you can amend that agenda, please. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just so that the public knows, we are only dealing with items in committee, uh, that are of either time sensitive or directly dealing, uh, with the COVID-19, uh, pandemic. So, you know, all of these items that are being tabled, like for sidewalk cafe, when restaurants are not open, that's the reason we're not ignoring them. Uh, but we are making sure we're dealing with those priority issues, uh, like this one.
That's a excellent point. We have a, if any other items, we have a, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.